So to clap, call any order. Mr. Miller, please do this from the place of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's hear it for all board members are present. Mr. Board, has public who has been given?
Yes, it has.
Okay, on to the shout outs and celebrations.
Okay, so this is the new agenda topic that we've got that we're trying. This is an opportunity for anyone of our teachers, or staff, or community members, or administration, students, anybody, to just give a quick shout out, or to celebrate something really positive that's happening in our district. It's just something that they can come on up to the microphone and just give a quick, like, I want to acknowledge so and so for something great that they did. So, something new that we're trying, and hopefully we've got a couple people that are willing to shout out and share the love.
I'm going to give a shout out here. Couple individuals I'd like to give recognition to. I'm Joe Behrens, high school director. I think I know a spot everybody here, but if you know I hate public speaking, I'd rather be facing that window. I came around, so I can't put my back anywhere with these people. So, I'll try to make this brief. I was asked to show up tonight to recognize some people, and when I was asked to do so, there were a few people came to my mind immediately. And the first ones I'd like to recognize is kind of Liz Perkins and Ryan Lemke. And the reason I would like to recognize them is because I thought we had a great culture here, previous to their positions, and they've been able to maintain that culture. I thought that was established previous to their taking that position as administrators here. I feel discipline items are always taken care of in a timely manner. It's an always consistent manner, too. So, I appreciate the fact that when I do a discipline referral, that I know pretty quickly what the results of that are, so I know things aren't being drug out and taking a lot of time to be settled out. We're always informed events that are taking place in the building. They have the respect of the staff and students, and very visible in the hallways, classrooms. You always see them in the hallways, so I appreciate their visibility. And they make me feel valued as a staff member. I think that's probably the most important thing. I'd like to recognize one other person, too, and I know I probably was only supposed to do one, but there were a few that I really did want to bring attention to. The other one is Todd Zimble. Todd, I've known him for the 19 years I've been here, or the start of 19 years now, and he takes tremendous pride in what he does with his work. During the summer hours, I have summer program going on, and I see him many times coming in, maybe ahead of his scheduled time, and coming after, just waiting for the floors to cure, depending on humidity and things like that. You know, his job is not always at 6:00 to 2:00, or 6:00 to 3:00, whenever they are. Sometimes he's coming in in the evening, because that's when the floors are ready to be taken care of. So, I see that happening throughout the summer. In my years of teaching, I've traveled many different districts and buildings for solo ensemble activities, whether as a judge or as a director. And it seems like to me that the Richland Center facilities, at least the ones that I'm privy to all throughout the school day, always seem like they're well maintained, but probably better than anyone from Madison to Monroe. You know, I've been in quite a few of the districts before, so I appreciate that. I know Todd is a part of the team, so I'm recognizing one person, and it takes a team to make the buildings look as good as they do. But the thing with Todd is he's been here a long time, and he's been consistent. I've been here 19 years, which is quite a while, and I think he's been here for over 40 years. I'm not sure exactly how long it's been. So, all three of the employees are always willing to drop anything. Whenever I've got an issue, any one of those three I just mentioned tonight will drop anything and help me if I have a need, so I appreciate that support. And it's a big reason why I'm still here today. It's a pleasure to work with all three of these individuals, and that's why I want to recognize all three of them tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, all. I'm excited to be here tonight, because there are so many incredible and positive things that are happening in this district. When you take a moment to sit back and watch everyone work their magic, you truly gain such an appreciation for each and every role that goes into providing a child with an exceptional educational experience. Tonight, I am here to shine a light on two very hardworking and dedicated individuals of the Richland School District. I recently joined the Richland School District team and worked at the primary school as a physical education teacher. I've had the pleasure of getting to know the exceptional custodial crew, and I've watched them work countless hours with a really big smile on their faces to transform our school into a safe and beautiful place. Navigating construction while also getting a school ready for a new school year is no small feat, yet they do it with a smile on their face and great pride. I especially wanted to recognize Marlin Good and Austin Coats for their fantastic and contagious positive attitude. They truly take pride in the job they do and are the unsung heroes of a school district. Thank you, Marlin and Austin, for your countless hours of hard work, and be in a positive figure for not only your coworkers, but also for the students to learn from and observe. Your impact is profound, and we are thankful that you are on our team.
Good evening. I'm Amy Hardy, the principal at Richland Center Primary School. I'm here on behalf of some individuals that could not make it tonight, but wanted to give a shout out to others. One is to a custodial person. It reads, "Mr. Marlin Good, thank you so much for everything you do to keep our school clean, safe, and running smoothly, especially during our summer construction. Your hard work often happens behind the scenes, but it never goes unnoticed. From early mornings to late evenings, your dedication makes a difference in our daily lives. We truly appreciate your effort, your kindness, your sense of humor, and the pride you take in your work. Our school is a better place because of you. You are such a good guy. With sincere thanks, Diane Nice." And our last one from the primary is a shout out. I know you're probably asking for individual shout outs, but I must give you a shout out to absolutely every single person at the primary school, and the miraculous work they did to get ready for the school year with all the construction obstacles. I am in awe of the work that was done, and how they are all adapting every single day to changes, and how they keep it all together. The entire RCPS faculty and staff deserve the biggest shout out for their dedication, caring, and professionalism, as they give our youngest learners their start to their educational journey." And that's a thank you from Tricia Lewis. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Emily Sarea. I am your new IMC director here at the high school. I want to thank Ms. Perkins for inviting me here tonight. I would like to give a shout out to Mrs. Robin Dickman. She is our director of our high program. So, the high program is relatively new, and it allows students to do school their way. And so, students are able to choose a blend of online and in-person options, and so students really are able to customize their education. And I think the best way to learn about programs is to talk about the students. So, I'm going to tell you about Frank. Frank is a student in Ms. Dickman's program. He's in sixth grade, and he comes here to the high school at the end of the school day, and the library is his spot just before he goes to cross-country practice. So, today Frank and I were able to have a really good chat, and he just went out of his way and telling me, "I just really love being here. I really like Mrs. Dickman." And I was like, "Tell me about that." And he was saying, "I love that I can be at home with my family. That's what I want to do. And I can still come to school, and I can be in sports." And I'm like, "Well, tell me about making friends." And he was like, "I'm making tons of friends in cross-country." And like, this is such a great opportunity for students and for families to do something really creative and outside of the box, and offer their kids the experience that they're hoping to get. And Mrs. Dickman has a really great rapport with all of her students, and I see this, but especially want to tell you about Frank. So, thank you all so much for everything you're doing, and for really creative solutions that we're finding to meet families' needs. Thank you.
I'm Carrie Stoltz. I'm the marketing and communications director here, and I am here on behalf of Mr. Armihow, who is the intermediate school principal. He has two shout outs. One for Shelby Funk, who is the administrative assistant, and especially on her work with the master schedule for RCIS, getting the kids in the classes that they need. And then also to Heather Clements, for helping the RCIS staff understand the use of assessments.
Anyone else? Thank you to everyone that gave a shout out and celebration tonight. Something we'll try to keep on future agendas.
All right. To public comment. Per policy 0167.3, anyone wishing to participate in the period of public comment must be a resident of the Richland School District, the parent or legal guardian of an enrolled district student, or an enrolled district student. Persons wishing to participate must physically be present at the meeting and must register in advance. Each participant shall be given three minutes to address the board. Speakers not permitted to make inflammatory comments, use inappropriate language or gestures, attack specific persons, or make a specific person the subject of their remarks. Please see policy 0167.3 for a complete list of requirements and restrictions. If a person is unable to adhere to these rules, they may be projected to end their comments. Mrs. Coleman?
Yes.
All right. On to reports. District administrator's report.
Okay, just a few things for our board and our public as well. Our third Friday count is coming up fast. This is an official date that all school districts in the state of Wisconsin officially count the number of school age children that reside in their community, specifically the ones that are butts in seats that are in our school, as well as those that may be attending elsewhere. And there's this huge reconciliation that happens where every then school district knows what their resident count is, which, as you heard Mr. Bosworth say numerous times, that's what drives our funding mechanism, okay? Our number of students, school age children that we have in our district boundary. So, that's coming up. That will be on September 19th. That's a huge day for our district and all districts. Tonight will be the last Monday night board meeting that we'll have. We will be transitioning to Wednesdays, starting with Wednesday, September 24th. And at that meeting, we will also be bringing the regular meeting schedule for you, so that we can look at some potential conflicts as it revolves around the holidays and different months where there may be conflicts there. But we'll bring that on the 24th, and then we'll be on every Wednesday, excuse me, the second and the fourth Wednesday. All our board meetings will be on Wednesdays, starting at that point, with the exception of the annual meeting, which you should mark on your calendar. This is not a meeting of the board. This is a meeting of our stakeholders in the community. This is our annual meeting, and that will be on Monday, October 20th. Monday, October 20th will be that. I believe it's at 6:30, but I will confirm that with you and make sure that you have plenty of notice with that. And then, one last thing. I believe our student council will talk about homecoming. I'll just quickly say that homecoming will be the week of the 29th, with our parade and our early out on that Friday, October 3rd, and then there's a dance on October 4th, but I'm guessing that you'll hear a little bit more with our student council. And then finally, something that I want our board and our public to be aware of. All of our buildings at different times participated in what's called Read Across the Hive, okay? Now that school is up and started again. And this is, generally speaking, a half hour block of time where all of our students and all of the adults in the building stop what they're doing, and they read, okay? And this is a way for our adults to model reading to our students, our students to read. They can bring anything they want, if they want to read. And so, with that, I want you to know that because during this half hour chunk of time, for instance, up here at the high school, it's roughly 1:15 to 1:45 on Mondays, that's when the district office also partakes in that, and so we actually put a sign on the door that we're unavailable during that half hour. Folks leave messages, we'll get back to them, but all of our folks will stop and read. And I think that that's a really good skill for our adults to model, as well as our students to see adults doing. The other buildings, they do it at different times, but I just want you to know that if you happen to swing by, and it's a normal day, and you know, there's a note on the door that says we'll read across the hive, the offices lot, or you're trying to get ahold of somebody, that's why. Okay? I think that's it. Do you have any questions for me? Okay, thank you so much.
Student council report.
All right, I believe we have Mr. Culver here tonight. Good evening.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kieran Culver, and I'm president of Richland Center Student Council. We are excited to be back in school and giving back to the student body. We are happy to report that the second year of our Buzz Buddies initiative has been successful. For the first three days of school, select student council members were stationed in the hallways during passing periods to give class directions for any students who were lost. As of today, the council has also put out order forms for homecoming class color t-shirts. They are available to students on Schooling Day and on scannable QR codes posted in the hallways. The dress up days for a homecoming week were also sent out to the student body. Lastly, we are finalizing plans to hold a student bonfire the week of homecoming, working with the fire department and faculty to bring this event back. That's all I have for you tonight. Does anyone have any questions or concerns that I should share with the council?
Mr. Culver, can you, is it too late for community folks to get an entry into the parade?
Um...
The homecoming parade?
We had an official due date September 1st, but we might be able to, like, have with some wiggle room with that. We don't want to, like, have everyone doing that, but we can make things work.
There's a lot of planning going on.
Yes.
All right?
Okay.
Folks, can I please reach out? Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right, on to the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the prior meeting minutes of August 25th, 2025? So, move. Motion made, but Mr. Miller, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, and this is troxial discussion. Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, on to financial items. Approval of statement of cash invoices?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the statement of cash dated September 4th, 2025, and approve community first bank general checking account checks number 87503-87534 ACH, number 252603591-252603634, EFT number 202500022-202500038, for a net total of $549,618.72. This is for the purpose of general operating costs of district.
Motion is made by Mr. Miller. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Dowdner. Mr. Bosworth, anything you want to point out or add?
Yeah, on the last, down there on the last page, there were some invoices related to civil rights training. Page 11, there's five individual invoices of $99 each, and then there's a Title IX training for $395. The $395 is a general fee we paid to WASB, and the others are kind of like seats. We're able to purchase in a group of five of them, and five of our staff members will receive some civil rights training, and then we'll, in turn, pass that training on to other members of the school district. That's it.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Dowdner?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, Mrs. Coleman, consent agenda items?
So, before I start, we have a little bit different format tonight, because we were going to do all computer, but it didn't quite work out, so I don't have a sheet to read, so I'm going to go out of the book. So, it may sound just a bit different, but, okay. So, consent agenda items. Motion to accept the donation of money to our alternative education off program valued at $575 from the Richland Campus Foundation. Motion to accept the donation of money valued at $1,850 from the Peter R. Marsh Foundation Grant. And motion to approve seven open enrollment out applications for the 2025-26 school year, and one open enrollment in application for the 2025-26 school year as presented.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
Take that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Miller. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mrs. Shark. Discussion. Mrs. Shark?
Aye.
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 Aye. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank the Richland Campus Foundation and the Peter R. Marsh Foundation Grant for generous donations. Is there a motion to approve modified agenda? So, move. Motion made by Mr. Miller. Is there a second?
I'll second.
This is troxial discussion. Mr. Miller?
Aye.
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 All right, on to information and discussion items. The high school under-enrolled classes for quarter one, 2025-26.
Okay, so by policy, each year, the board reviews all of the class sizes and teacher-to-student ratios. That's done in November of each year, okay? This one is specific to the high school, grade 7 through 12, and it relates to quarter one. So, you'll see the high school under-enrolled classes four times a year. The second one will coincide in November, when they, when the district brings, only bring all of them for the district. So, what you'll see there is any of the courses that are offered in quarter one that have less than 10 students in them right now. I believe today was the last day that students could make changes to their schedules, so this should be pretty locked in now for quarter one. We do have high school administration here that can try to answer any specific questions that you have. You have the data in front of you, along with just a short description or information that they wanted to point out. Before I ask for questions, maybe high school admin, do you have anything to add that I missed that you want to point out?
I just want to point out the AP CAP seminar and the AP research classes, just to explain that that runs along with each other, so the teacher is teaching them essentially at the same time. That's something we've done, because that class has historically been lower, but there are students that really like it, so we found a way to make that work, that the teacher is able to teach both of them at the same time. And there were a couple elective courses that did have one or two students that we ended up not running and reassigning the teacher. So, we always do our best to look at the data, and even things like building construction, those also run other blocks, but certain students, maybe they're in band and choir, or they're needed somewhere else, they have to take it in that block, so it could make it lower.
Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you.
All right. Technical corrections, policy updates?
Okay, so, as you know, we subscribe to NEOLA for our policies as it relates to our general operating policies, and a couple times a year, NEOLA will work with the folks at the state level, whether it be specifically DPI, or the state legislation, or the federal legislation, and make sure that our policies are in line with statutes, okay? And they offer a couple of different revisions a couple times a year, all right? So, this was the early summer. The corrections actually came out in late May. We reviewed them with NEOLA in early July, and then it went to the last policy committee meeting, and now it's here for the board. Technical corrections, you'll see two different parts here. Technical corrections later on in the agenda, you'll see revisions and new policies. Technical corrections are corrections that don't change the meaning of the policy, don't add any substance to the policy. They're really just clarifying wording, punctuation, spelling, better phrasing, better terminology that they want to use, things like that. And so, by our policy, technical corrections don't necessarily get approved by the board, but the board is certainly made aware of them. And so, there is a summary sheet there, a couple pages in a PDF, called Technical Corrections attached there, and each of the policies that are getting updated is, there's a short description of what's going on there. Again, most of them, technical corrections, but it might be, again, changing the way we phrase a certain wording to something else. It might expand on some wording. It might change the order of the policy, those kinds of things, but not changing the real meaning of the policy. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have regarding technical corrections. Again, no meaningful changes, it's more just clarification, things like that. But any questions from the board? Okay, thank you.
District vacancies and appointments?
Okay, and I apologize, this is usually the first information and discussion item, but it got slid to the bottom. Regardless, we have just a handful of positions that still have openings. We've got several that are going through the interview process, or have recently completed the interview process. That's the night custodian, primarily at the primary school. We've got a maintenance position in the district. We've got a night custodian at the intermediate school, and then we've got the administrative assistant to the district administrator and the board. Those are all in the interview process and hope to have candidates soon. Kind of working up from that interview process, we've also got the speech and language pathologist that's primarily at the primary school. We do have a plan in place, working with CISA, but we are going to leave this open, at least for the time being. Every once in a while, we'll take it down, put it back up, so it kind of gets to the top of the list. We would love to have an in-person person here doing our speech and language in all of our buildings, so we're going to leave this posted as is, but it's unlikely that we're going to find anybody at this particular moment in time, but we're going to continue to try. But right now, we do have a plan, so our students are making sure that their needs are met. We've got a special education aid position that is open right now as well, and we've got that drug-free communities project coordinator that has been open. We did recently, we did what I just said, we took it down, reposted it, did that again, and with this last kind of refresh here, we do have a couple of candidates. I have not examined them very thoroughly at this point, but we'll do so here in the next couple of days. So, we're hoping to have that position filled. The grant cycle ends on September 30th, and so if we don't have a qualified person by September 30th, that's likely going to be the end of the grant. I think we've explored all options, but I'm cautiously optimistic that one of the candidates that we have will come through, and we'll be able to continue that for our community. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Board, the only clarification that I see is at the bottom of the list for the certified admin exempt and non-exempt, where Mr. Noble and Mr. Clerkin are both listed as director of operations and maintenance. May I help you, we have recently split those, that role into two different roles?
Yes, we're actually calling them both, even though one will have a primary focus of operations and one with maintenance, we want to make sure that they have the ability to have a little bit of overlap, and so they're both going to kind of fill that role of director of maintenance and operations, even though they'll have a specific focus in one or the other.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
All right, on to actions, policy updates, revision, new policies.
Okay, so this is the second part of the NEOLA, so I won't go into in-depth on the background, because you just heard it a few minutes ago, but this is the meat and potatoes. These are the policies that actually changed with some substance, and so this would require some action from the board. This was a recommendation from the policy committee. The PDF that's attached there does have a summary of all of the policies and the revisions that are looking to be made. I did bring my notes from the policy committee, so I can try to answer any specific questions as well. These are all recommendations from NEOLA on whether it's cross-referencing policies, consolidating policies, eliminating the redundancy in one policy and putting it somewhere else, those kinds of things. But they do change what the policies actually mean, and so they're all listed there. I will point out one additional thing that was added since the policy committee. Let me just, one second. Policy 8500.01, it's the student meal fee collection, is revised. You'll see that the summary is listed in here. This was not presented to the policy committee. This was not part of NEOLA's recommendation, but as we have recently undergone the DPI food service audit, okay, this was a policy that they, was required to be changed in order to be in compliance with them. And essentially, all it did was it added the nondiscrimination statement to that policy so that it matches the 8500 food service policy. But that is something different that was changed since the policy committee did see that, so I want to make sure I pointed that out. But again, happy to answer any questions. Again, I've got my notes here, I'll try to answer them to the best of my ability, but again, all recommendations from either NEOLA or DPI. Policy committee, or former policy committee, if you have anything to add, you're welcome to weigh in as well.
All right, is there a motion to approve recommendation from the policy committee to approve the policy revisions by NEOLA as presented, effective immediately? So, move. Motion made by Mr. Dowdner. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, this is troxial discussion. Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
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 All right. Make the motion move into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.851C and F to consider employment and personnel matters involving a non-certified employee, including discussion of disciplinary data. The board may take action on this matter in closed session if necessary and appropriate. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mrs. Sharp, discussion. Ms. Troxel?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.